Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Stratford Board of Zoning Appeals Public Hearing, scheduled for today, July 5th, for the seven petitions that were received and on our agenda. Some housekeeping matters. Mr. Barrett is still unfortunately unable to be here with us this evening as a result of a medical issue, and alternate Commissioner Judy Clary will be sitting in his place. The rest of the regular commission are seated. If you have a cellphone, please put it on silent so that the public speakers are not distracted by cellphones ringing in the chambers. For anyone who's not appeared before us, what we will do is we will call the petition. We will read the petition into the record. The applicant will come forward, give us the overview of what they are requesting. The commissioners will then ask questions of the applicant. After that, we will ask if anyone wants to speak in favor, speak against, and then when all individuals have an opportunity to speak, we will close the public hearing, and we may or may not take up each individual petition at our administrative session, which is open to the public directly following this meeting. That having been said, I will ask Mr. Lawland to please read Petition Number 1, 50 Husatonic Avenue into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Item one for tonight is 50 Husatonic Avenue. It's the petition of SHM Stratford LLC, seeking a site plan review and variances of Connecticut General Statute 8.3 of the max building height from the required 30 feet to 35 feet, the max impervious area from the required 70% to 90%, max open space from the required 20% to 10% for the construction of a new boat storage warehouse incidental to the existing marine use in a WF or waterfront zone. The identified hardship is pre-existing non-conforming property.
Thank you. Mr. Lawland, will the petitioner or their representative please come forward? State your name and address for the record. No, right at that podium there, sir. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
All right, for the record, my name is John Paul Garcia. I'm a licensed professional engineer in Land Surveyor, licensed practice today in Connecticut, principal of Office 190 Fairwood Road, DeTonne, Bethany. I'm representing Safe Harbor, who owns the Marina. And with me tonight is Basil Bobrowski, who's the Marina manager, to answer any specific questions you have. The site in question has been an operating Marina since the 1700s, boatyard and Marina. And what we're looking for tonight is, there's an existing...
Building?
Well, there's three things, two of which are housekeeping, and maybe I might as well hit them first. The open space and the impervious cover have been that way since way before the 70s and 80s. And so all we're looking to do is clean that up. Nothing we do and nothing we're proposing to do will change anything. But I think that because it's a requirement of your regs, I think it should be cleaned up to be brought forward and to be either in performance or have a legal variance for it. But this site has been paved over, and the open space and everything else has been exactly the same way since before my association with it, and believe it or not, that was when we were just talking about that 1980 one was owned by Remlap Enterprises, Dick Palmer. Anyways, what they're proposing to do is, this is the existing office building right here. Here's Broad Street and Husatonic Avenue. This is the existing office building, and this is a small storage building. What they're proposing to do is rip down that storage building and install a new 100-square-foot...
Nine thousand. Nine thousand square foot.
Nine thousand square foot, but 100 foot by 100, by 90 feet, maintenance facility. And what we're looking to do is have the maintenance facility the same height as the existing building. And the reason for that is because we need the biggest doors that we can get on the front of it in order to get boats in and out of the building. And by dropping this to 30 feet, the effect of door height becomes very, very shallow, believe it or not, because if you've ever been on the yard, they work on some very large boats. So you need as much height as you can. So that's why we're asking for an area so that we can have the ridges lined up, and that would give us the maximum size of the opening that we can get in there, allowing for structure and everything else. The building cannot be seen, the new building, cannot be seen from anywhere other than the water. It can't be seen from Broad Street, it can't be seen from Husatonic Avenue, because it's screened by the existing building. You can see it from the restaurant, or you can see it from down at the boat ramp, but it's mainly screened everywhere else but the water areas. And that's basically it. I mean, it's a relatively simple building. We've been to the Architectural Review Board, and assuming that you give us an affirmative, from here we would go to zoning board, or to clean the zoning and to coastal site plan. But we feel, what we're asking for, you know, we didn't construct the building, like I said, the building's been there. Dick Palmer, I actually did structural engineering in there in the 80 or 81 for Dick Palmer, when he owned it. So the building has been just the way it is, with the exception that the facade and the, you know, the plantings and everything else were renovated about, what, 15, 18 years ago?
Yeah, 98.
98, okay, so excuse me, 22 years ago. Time flies. But they never added to the height of the building, all they did was modify the facade and put the porch on and change the interior. So the building's been in existence. It's not a question of, we're trying to codify something that didn't exist. It did exist. It's always existed that way. So that's over here.
Thank you very much. Do any... Oops, go ahead.
Could you please spell your name for me?
John Paul.
Thank you. And Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? Hearing on, I'd like to... Oh, go ahead. No, Ms. Clary has.
Has there been any input from the neighbors at all?
According to... Dan, no.
No, we haven't received any comments for or against the application.
We, you know, we submitted the card, we submitted the letter of application, we submitted certifying documents.
Okay, thank you. All applicant, all requirements of the applicant have been met correctly. Thank you very much. Any other questions from the commissioners? Now, thank you very much. Is everyone in the audience here to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? Anyone to speak against? Speak against. Hearing on the channel, entertaining motion to close the public hearing on this petition.
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Move, Mrs. Lawland, do I hear her second? Second, Ms. Gibson, any discussion on the motion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
That is the motion to close the hearing.
That closes the hearing on your petition, that is correct. We may or may not take it up under the administrative session. It depends on the feeling and the time required.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Have a pleasant day.
Thank you very much. And I'll ask Ms. Witham to read into the record Petition Number 2, 498 Second Avenue.
498 Second Avenue, petition of Slabodin Merrickgovich, seeking a site plan review and variances of Section 4.2 from the required front setback of 20 feet to 14.5 feet, the side yard setback requirement of 10 feet to 5.7 feet, and the max building coverage requirement of 25% to 30.21%. Also, Section 14.2 for the expansion of a non-conforming structure incidental to an addition to a single-family dwelling in an RS4 zone. The hardship noted here is existing lot area is less than required and existing house projects into the required side yard.
Thank you very much. Is the petitioner present? Please state your name and address for the record.
I will try to do that. It's Parrick Stein Schneider. I go by Paddy, is a little bit easier, P-A-D-D-Y. Principal of Gotham Design Planning and Development, which is a New York firm. I find myself in uncharted waters in my experience. I have not been to this part of Connecticut before. I think it's very lovely, though I do point out, I grew up in Litchfield for about 10 years, so I'm not just from New York. And I loved Litchfield, it was a wonderful place. It's, we go by Bob for that first name, because I can't say his first name, it's too complicated. And the last name is Merrinkovic. I've known Bob, actually, for about 10 years. He and I have worked on a number of really nice houses that we've built, kind of further west in Connecticut and in Westchester County. The way Bob came to this property, I thought was rather interesting. His son is going to college to be a pilot. I didn't know you could go to college to be a pilot. And he was originally going to be taking flying lessons someplace that I guess was, you know, closer to Greenwich, that area, and it was all booked up. And he found that he could get time at the airport that's here. I know it's not, what's in Stratford, although it's owned by Bridgeport. And what Bob was doing was coming up here with his son when he was going for his flying lessons, and he started really liking the area, and he saw a couple of houses for sale and then bought one. And Bob is a very good builder. He doesn't have little plastic keys. He's Bob the builder for, with real tools and things. And he really fell in love with doing something with this house. What we're proposing on this is to effectively keep the width of the house as it, exactly as it currently is. So the side yard that we're looking at is to build a small addition on the front and the side and match the existing side yard. Setback, it is 5.7 feet where 10 is required, but we just feel that, given the fact that this wall is already there, extending that will make it a cleaner look with a house, which is what they're looking for. The addition that we're doing on the back, other than that, it only has an issue with the fact that it increases the site coverage, which is the major variance we're really looking for here. The front, the addition on the house actually complies. We didn't realize that front stoops would be counting into the required setback. So the front of the house was designed specifically to not require variance, and then when we submitted the documents, we found out that the front stoop also includes. So that's, front stoop is eight foot wide, five foot deep, and about one foot 10 high. So I think it's almost like the front walk comes up to the house. So I don't think that'll have a tremendous impact, but of course, that's, you know, what you guys have to figure out. The larger issue here is the fact that we're looking to increase the coverage of the house when we're already non-conforming. The lot is a smaller lot than what the required zoning is, but it's also very consistent, it seems, with a lot of the other houses in the neighborhood. When we looked at the property cards on them, most of the lots in this area are less than the 7,500. So it's, and a lot of the houses, there are some very modest houses there, but there's some other houses that are actually significantly bigger, and there are also lots that are not quite what the requirement is. So I don't think we're doing anything that's uniquely different in this neighborhood. We've been trying to design it in a way that would fit in very well. And the main thing is to really bring this house up to current standards in terms of its construction. As I said, he's a builder, he takes that seriously. He's very concerned with the environment, so a lot of things we're doing here are super insulation packages and things like that, which necessitate thicker walls than the house currently has, even though we're looking for a closed cell insulation. So I think those, you know, the idea of the coverage, I think, is the major one. One thing, Bob is on vacation, or else he would be here. I don't think that's really a great excuse. I've never gone on vacation when I was supposed to be here. I'd like to be on vacation. There's a shed back here that's 99 square feet. Right before he left, I said, does he really have a plan for that shed? And he indicated that, not really. And I said, any reason that we need to keep it? Because if we got rid of that shed, we're reducing the coverage on the site by 99 square feet, which gets us down to, instead of being 30.43%, we're closer to 29% where 25 is required. So that is something that we would certainly be willing to do. The house itself is fairly modest. What really pushes us over in the numbers is the fact that it has a two-car garage. A lot of the houses in the neighborhood don't have garages. This one has a big garage, which I'm sure, knowing Bob, is one of the things that made it attractive to him, since he has his construction things that he needs someplace to put. So, and he's, you know, a careful person, he's going to want that to be inside a structure and not sitting in a yard someplace to be distracted. I think those are the main points of that side of it. I do want to point out, you know, intensity of use, and I realize that I am really in uncharted waters. Usually when I'm appearing in a New York zoning board, they're very concerned with the impacts I'm going to have on the neighborhood with traffic, parking, and those kinds of things. In this case, we're actually reducing the number of bedrooms in the house from four to three. He's got plenty of parking on the site. We're looking for a way of, you know, re-landscaping part of the property, the, someone, I forget with the committee or the board, she's in charge of, I don't know how it's structured, the woman who's concerned about the silver maple that's out in front of the house. So we actually had our arborist take a look at that, even though that's on the village's property, so we've put measures in that'll protect that tree and ensure that it's long time survival. I think we're trying to do everything that would make this a modest and reasonable request, and I'm certainly hoping that you agree. Questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions for any of the commissioners? Any commissioners have any questions of the applicant? If not, thank you... Whoa, Ms. Clary?
Once again, the same question. Any remarks from the neighbors?
I have not, but I know Bob has been up here a lot on the weekends. I don't know if he's, he's actually told me, he's had conversations with people. Everybody seems very nice. When I was over there one day taking pictures, a woman came out of the house, two away from us, and she wanted to know why I was taking pictures of her house. And I said, well, you know, we're going to do work on this one. She goes, well, why would you want pictures of the other houses? And I said, because we're, you know, we want to see how we're going to relate to it and if we're going to affect anyone. Views, sunlight, things like that, we want to make sure that we're doing this in a way that doesn't have an adverse impact. So I haven't heard anything, I don't know, anything's been brought in?
Ms. Brennan, no comments?
It's always nice when people don't come and start yelling at me, so it's...
No comments were received. The applicant's adhered to all requirements in terms of mailings and notifications, correct?
That's correct. We have no comments for or against this application.
Thank you very much. If there's no other questions? If not, thank you very much. I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? In favor of the petition? Anyone in opposition of the petition? In opposition of the petition? Hearing none, and Chair, entertaining a motion to close the public hearing on this application. Motion by Ms. Clary, second by Ms. Witham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
We're going to move on to Petition Number 3. I think we'll take them individually. Actually, no. Let me rephrase that. Let's read into the record 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. It's the same parcel, there's no sense in having someone read them in at the same time. So I'm going to ask Ms. Gibson, if you'd be so kind, is to read 3, Ms. Clary read 4, Mr. Lawland 5, Ms. Witham 6, and we'll go back to Ms. Gibson for 7. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so 630 James Farm Road, petition of David De Osilio, seeking variances for a five lot subdivision for four single, for four single-family dwellings and a lot for existing cell yard tower in the RS1 zoning district. The following proposed lots require variances approvals prior to the submittal to the inland wetlands and planning commission. The hardship, shape of the land, existing cell tower and equipment, house and accessories, building and wetlands.
Next one?
630 James Farm Road, Lot 1, petition of David De Osilio, seeking a variance of Section 3.11 of the accessory structure, side yard setback from the required three feet to 2.6 feet for the existing garage incidental to the existing single-family dwelling.
Thank you, Ms. Lawland.
Item 5, 630 James Farm Road, Lot Number 2, petition of David De Osilio, seeking variances of Section 3.3.1 of the 30-foot frontage requirement for a rear lot to 25 feet and to waive the max number of adjacent rear lot accessways from the required 2 to 3 for a single-family building lot.
Number 6.
Number 6, 630 James Farm Road, Lot 3, petition of David De Osilio, seeking variances of 3.3.1, Sections 3.3.1, of the 30-foot frontage requirement for a rear lot to 25 feet for a single-family building lot.
And the final one.
Number 7. 630 James Farms Road, Lot 5, petition of David De Osilio, seeking variances to waive all requirements in Sections 3.3.1 and Sections 4.2 to create a separate lot, I'm sorry, to create a separate lot around the existing cell yard tower and associated equipment.
Thank you very much. Petitioner or representative present? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is David De Osilio. I live at 6020 Main Street Putney in Stratford, and I'm the owner of 630 James Farm Road. I'm here today requesting variances in order to subdivide the property at 630 James Farm Road into four residential building lots and one cell tower lot. Since some of the variances are related to the subdivision and others are relating to the cell tower, I would like to ask the chairman if I can present my application in two parts. The first part relating to the subdivision and the second part to the cell tower.
Without objection.
Great. The certificates of mailing were delivered by myself to the office of the Planning and Zoning Department and are posted online. And I'd like to hand out two sets of exhibits. Okay, so the first set of exhibits are the photographs. I'd like to just quickly go through them. I know it's a holiday week, and hopefully all of you have had the opportunity to visit the site and walk it, but it's quite large, so I decided to provide you with some additional photos. The first photo is a photo of the front of the house that I took standing on James Farm Road. Shows the, the sun was a little in the lens, so you can see the house and the cell tower directly behind the house. Photo number 2 is a close-up photo of the house, which is currently under restoration or renovation. Photo number 3 is the land to the right of the driveway from James Farm Road. So I just walked down to the right, it has quite a bit of frontage, and I took a photograph showing the approximate location of where the driveway is going to enter the property for the lots. Photo number 4 is a photo of James Farm Road looking northbound along the frontage. And photo 5 is the reverse of that. I went down the street and took a photo of James Farm Road along the frontage heading towards the Merritt Parkway. Photo 6, I walked up about 240 feet up the, where the accessway driveway is going to be, and I wanted to just show you the topography, it's hard to tell, but that is facing James Farm Road from the lot, not quite the middle of the lot, because the lot is 1,200 feet deep. Photo 7 was taken from the, is a picture of the field, the garden, the garage, the hoop house, from the corner of the Isaac Gonzalez property, which is the southernmost corner of the property. Photo 8 is from the exact same spot, I just turned a little bit to the right, showing the fields and heading down towards the rear of the property. Photo 9 is almost on the driveway of the existing house. It shoots what's a large garden, but this is effectively where Lot Number 4 exists. It's going to be a one and a half acre lot. We'll get into the details on the subdivision in a moment. Photo number 10 is effectively Lot Number 2. Everything you see that's hay is primarily a 3.6 acre lot, I'm proposing, which is Lot Number 2. The rear of this photograph, you can't tell this time of year, but it abuts the second hole of the Country Club, Orno Country Club. So it's in full foliage, so you can't see through there, but in the wintertime, you can see right through to the golf course. Photo 11, I walked about halfway down that hill. I'll be mindful that this lot is 700 feet deep, so I wanted to give you a little bit more perspective as I walked the property. Now, photo 12 is from the rearmost point of the property, and you can see the size of that cell tower is 110 feet tall, and you can see the back of the garages that exist and some of the cell equipment. And photo 13 is the exact same location, except turning a little bit to my left to show you a grouping of trees, of which some will be removed for Lot Number 3. So those are the photos to give you some perspective on the property. Now, if you go to the larger handout, this is where all of the details are located. Exhibit 1 shows the existing property, which consists of 9.6 acres of land. The property has 254 feet of road frontage along James Farm Road and is 1,250 feet deep. The rear of the property abuts Orno Country Club's second hole, as I mentioned, and there are approximately 1.1 acres of wetlands to the rear of the property. There are several structures in the property, including a single-family home, a detached multi-car garage, a hoop house, a garden, a cell tower, and the associated cell tower equipment. Note the small and large rectangles below the house. These are here, these are the hoop house and the garden which will be removed. I'd like to give you just a, this, by the way, is interesting. This was taken from a drone, this is an actual photograph, survey. So this was, a drone goes every two feet back and forth across the property, and used up a half a dozen, dozen batteries, and it was just an amazing thing, the technology of the surveyors these days. I'd like to give you a brief history of the property. In 1946, Pedro and Wilma Fedorko purchased the property and built their house and garage on the site. You can imagine in 1946, nothing existed up there. Candlewood Road was not there, Judith Terrick wasn't there, the houses on either side, there may have been a couple on James Farm Road, I'm assuming there was a farm by Mr. James there, but I mean, it was pretty remote. He lived there, he was a lifelong resident, Mr. Fedorko, and in 1984, I never met him, but I understand he was a very interesting gentleman, he was like an engineer and tinkerer, he decided he wanted to generate electricity utilizing wind power. So he applied for and erected, got approvals for and erected a 110-foot tower with a three-blade windmill behind his garage. I have the original waiver, zoning commission letter, and building permit for the tower that I'd like to submit for the record. 12 years later, in 1996, a company called Nextel Communications, those of us of a certain age will remember that name, approached Mr. Fedorko and offered to pay him to abandon the windmill and install cell equipment on the existing structure. The way most of these tower leases work is by paying a monthly rent to the landlord or the landowner, but after both Mr. and Mrs. Fedorko passed away over 10 years ago, their heirs, who live here in Connecticut, continued to collect the rent from the cell tower, but left the house vacant. That is, until November 2020, at which time an out-of-state company purchased the entire property for 1.9 million. The company created and recorded a perpetual easement for the cell tower and access to that easement up the driveway of the house. And those easements, along with all current future revenue from the cell tower, go to Tarpon Towers out of Florida. So they own a perpetual easement, and all the income, all the rent from that tower goes to a third party. I'd like to submit a copy of the perpetual easement for the record. And this is recorded on the land records. Earlier this year, that investor sold the abandoned house and the land to me. So what I bought was beautiful property with an abandoned house that was dilapidated, a cell tower that was not dilapidated, that was creating revenue, but the revenue was... a cell tower that was not dilapidated, that was creating revenue, but the revenue wasn't coming to me. So I had a decision. What am I going to do with the property? And what I decided to do was come before you and future boards, if I get past this one, with a, this subdivision I'm about to propose. Now exhibit number two is a plan showing my proposal to divide the property into four residential building lots. You can see I've circled sort of the details of each lot on the lot in orange. Lot number one has 178 feet of frontage along James Farm Road. It's the house, it's the lot with the house on it. It's 409 feet deep. It totals 1.626 acres, and it has no wetlands. The existing house and garages will remain on lot number one, and I'm in the process of having that restored as we speak. Lot number two is a rear lot that is directly behind lot number one. It has 25 feet of accessway along James Farm Road and a width of 203 feet and a depth of 703 feet. It totals 3.6 acres with 2.9 acres of usable area and .46 acres of wetland soils to the rear of the property. And the wetland soils are identified on the map as the dotted areas you'll see here at the very bottom. Lot number three is a rear lot with 25 feet of accessway along James Farm Road, a width of 207 feet, a depth of 560 feet, and totals 2.82 acres with 1.891 acres of usable area and .61 acres of wetlands to the rear of the property. Lot number four is totally conforming, so you don't have an application on that. That has 25 feet of accessway along James Farm Road, a width of 182 feet and a depth of 204 feet and totals 1.5 acres with no wetlands. So now let's take a look at each lot individually and go over exactly what I'm asking this board to consider and approve in more detail. Exhibit three shows lot number two highlighted in yellow. This lot is obviously very large. I mentioned it's 3.6 acres. It's more than double the size requirements of a rear lot. The lot conforms to all rear lot regulations of land size and setbacks. However, I am requesting a variance of 3.1.1 to reduce the accessway from 30 feet to 25 feet and to allow a third adjacent accessway. Exhibit four, and this is a very important exhibit, shows the yellow highlighted variances I'm requesting for lot number two. You'll see the 25 feet, .01 feet frontage, and then you'll see I highlighted zoning variance required to allow three adjacent rear lots. Now, on this, there's also an orange highlighted area. And the orange highlighted area is a shared driveway, driveway that I am proposing to be used by all three lots. The driveway will meet the zoning regulations of a minimum 16 feet wide and be capable of handling two-way traffic for the couple of homes that are going to be there. There will be one telephone pole installed on James Farm Road, and all the utilities will run underground to serve the lots. According to zoning regulations 3.3.1, rear lots, the required accessway for a rear lot in an RS1 zone is 25 feet, which is what I am proposing. However, the regulation also states that if the accessway is longer than 300 feet, then the required accessway must be increased to 30 feet. This accessway is 410 feet. Now, I have enough frontage to accommodate 30 feet. This is a waiver, I'll be totally honest, of convenience. There are some utilities underground on lot number one, which I'm trying to steer clear of. And because I have a shared driveway of 16 feet and 75 feet of frontage, it seemed reasonable that I'm going to have plenty of room to do what we need to do there. If you look at the top of, let me see where I am. One second. Okay, so I'm asking 25 feet because I'm installing a single common driveway to serve the three rear lots. Again, the orange area highlighted on exhibit four identifies the location of the common driveway. It's smack in the center of the middle accessway. I am proposing that the three rear lots have a combined accessway of 75 feet, which will accommodate a wide driveway and leave 29 feet on each side of the driveway for landscaping. The second regulation I'm asking to vary is also 3.3.1 rear lots. And the regulation states that no more than two accessways for rear lots can be side-by-side or adjacent. Now I assume the reason for this regulation was not to have more than two paved driveways side-by-side. I don't know why the reg states that, which is clearly not the case here. In this case, lot number two creates a third adjacent accessway, but the accessway will not be a driveway. I considered the alternative of putting the driveway along the northern property line and installing it totally conforming. And if you look at this exhibit four, on the top you'll see some red dotted lines. I have room to put another driveway into access lot two. But it seems crazy to take all the trees down, they're beautiful giant towering trees, to encroach on all the backyards of Candlewood Road because of this regulation, so therefore I'm asking for relief via a waiver. The common driveway I am proposing, to me, seems much more logical and the least impactful on the neighbors. So, in closing, on lot number two, I'm requesting a variance of 3.3.1, item seven, to vary the accessway from 30 feet to 25 feet, and 3.3.1, item eight, to increase the maximum of adjacent accessways from two to three. And my hardship is lot shape, existing house, and underground utilities that are existing on the property. Now, it should be noted that I'm willing to consider, or excuse me, I'm willing to condition your approval on deed restricting accessways to lots two and four so that somebody in the future maybe buys this lot and doesn't say, well, I want the driveway on my little strip. So I can control that 75 feet, so it'll never change. And I'm willing to offer to the board, if they are so inclined, a condition of approval that states a single driveway will serve the three lots in the center of the accessways. Now lot number three, exhibit number five, is a lot, is, this is the lot that the driveway will be constructed on, serving lots two, three, and four. This is also very large at 2.8 acres in size. And for the same reasons outlined with lot number two, I'd like to vary the accessway from 30 feet to 25 feet. Exhibit six, which looks very much like four, but highlights the little 25-foot of road frontage, that's the only waiver I'm looking for, 30 feet to 25 feet. Just a reminder again that 25 feet is the standard accessway for rear lots. However, that 30 feet is required if the accessway is greater than 300 feet. In this case, the actual length is 540 feet. So I'm requesting a variance of 3.3.1, item seven, to vary the accessway from 30 feet to 25 feet. My hardship being stated on the irregular lot shape, the existing house and underground utility locations. Exhibit seven depicts lot number, lot number four. This is a totally conforming lot to all zoning regulations. And the reason it's conforming is because the driveway is less than 300 feet. Now, the town planners, in their remarks, asked if I looked at alternatives, and I have. Exhibit eight is a subdivision applicant, subdivision layout showing a totally conforming five-lot subdivision, six-lot subdivision, I'm sorry, five-lot subdivision, five residential lots. It would require a road and a cul-de-sac and adds a considerable, considerable, I can't speak, considerable amount of impervious surfaces because road regulations require a wide road, not a driveway. Not only is it inexpensive, which is irrelevant to the board, but it, this, you know, creating all those imperious, impervious services doesn't seem like the best thing to do. Furthermore, they are not rear lots anymore, so they're smaller to one acre instead of one and a half to three and a half acres. Also, the side yard, front yard setbacks are normal, where they're one and a half times for the rear lots. So more lots, closer to neighbors, more impervious surfaces, didn't seem like the right way to go. But this is an option. And this would require no waivers. So in conclusion, in conclusion, I am asking for two simple waivers to do the residential component of my subdivision, neither of which will encroach a neighbor in any way and in fact, help create a low-impact residential enclave of three new homes on oversized lots. To recap, the waivers are accessways from 30 to 25 for lots two and three, and the waiver of the maximum accessways. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to just, I kind of threw a lot at you here in a short period of time, so I'd like to pause for a moment and see if there's any questions regarding this particular part of what I'm trying to accomplish here on James Farm Road.
That's fine. Do any commissioners have any questions over the proposal for the subdivisions? For the lots exclusive of the cell tower?
And you can certainly ask him later also. I'm just asking now because it's a lot of data.
Okay, seeing none, let's move on to the cell tower discussion.
Okay, so before I get to the cell tower part of it, I wanted to read something about hardship. Many of you probably don't know, but I actually served on this board for five years, so I'm pretty familiar with your job, and thank you for your service. But variances are granted on the basis of what they call exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship. I'm going to do my best Barry Knott presentation here, by the way. Exceptional difficulty and unusual hardship, what does that mean? Well, it means that there's some unusual hardship, exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship are terms used in the Connecticut general statutes to describe the conditions that must be met before the zoning board of appeals can grant a variance. I must convince you that there are special conditions or circumstances affecting this property, but not affecting the rest of the neighborhood or the town. These must be related solely to the property's unusual shape or topography or the condition of an existing structure. Now clearly, my property meets two of these conditions. The shape of the property is narrower at the road and then widens another 200 feet out and is 1,250 feet deep. That's number one. The second condition is there's a cell tower plop in the middle of it, which is very unusual. But interestingly enough, the cell tower started out as an accessory to a residential use and was converted, which I don't even know if it was done through zoning. I think maybe they just stuck it up there. No one knew what was going on in 96. But I haven't figured that answer out yet. So, you know, should you grant the requested variances relating to the residential component, you would be acting consistent with the zoning applications in the neighborhood. Next door, 530 James Farm Road, right directly next door, if you go back to the very first page, on the bottom, you'll see a driveway, common driveway, serving two houses right here. A three, well, it serves two houses. There was one more house on the road, so it was a three-lot subdivision. Those new homes are 550 and 570 James Farm Road and are directly next to my property, sharing 800 feet of property boundary. And I found out today also that that applicant came before this board and achieved, and got waivers on frontage for both lots. And I have copies of those, if you'd like them for the record, but they are a part of the record in Town Hall. Next door to that, 480 James Farm Road, which is not on these maps, it's a little further down, it's the next adjacent property, was divided to create a rear lot. And then, believe it or not, on Judith Terrace, there's a rear lot. I didn't realize it until I looked at the map and widened it out, but there's a rear lot there. So this is very common in this area, and I believe the residential component is very consistent with, with that. So the second part of my presentation tonight is something I'm sure you've never heard of before, I've never heard of before, and I've never even seen this situation. In the middle of the property, as I mentioned, exists a communications tower and associated equipment. And I'm requesting a variance to create a very small, non-residential building lot, which is, just has the tower on it and this, like, if anybody who's gone up there, they'll see it's like sort of a, I don't know, 12 by 20 communications, like, building that has air conditioners hanging off the back of it and ground, you know, grounded all over the place. And the reason I want to do that is there's a very interesting dynamic with this property, and it's why probably nobody bought it, except me. And that is, is that the tax assessor doesn't break out the commercial taxes because it's all one parcel. And actually, the town is undervaluing this cell tower tremendously, and I'll get to more of that in a minute. So if you go to exhibit nine, I highlighted the cell tower in yellow. It's a parcel I'm trying to create. It's a very small, non-conforming parcel. Exhibit 10 is a, it's that same parcel highlighted in yellow, but blown up to a much larger scale. And in orange, you can see the triangular tower, the 12 by 30 building with the concrete steps, and something called a raceway, which runs all the electronics from the top of the tower down to the building. Obviously, the record map is going to state this is not a residential building lot because you can't build a house on a little tiny lot like that. But it requires a waiver, which I'm asking for of all of 4.2 and all of 3.3.1. Because it is in a residential zone, I need to request all those waivers. One thing, and I'm going to go on the record here without divulging too much, it will also, by allowing and approving this lot, which is very important, and perhaps more importantly, allow the town tax assessor to properly assess the property and equipment for its value, which should result in more revenue for the town. Now, I'm not going to give you a whole lesson here on taxation, but when you have a commercial structure with rental income, the town sends out a form. I have other buildings. And I have to show what I paid for it. I have to show what the rental income is and all that. They don't do that in the residential arena. So this is way undervalued, and I'm going to hit you with a number that's going to shock you. By approving this lot, by my calculations, the town will get $65,873 more per year in tax revenue. Not going to change anything. It exists. But by carving that little thing out, and I'm going to deed it to the tower company, because this way I don't have to get involved, that's what, that will, by my calculations, be the result based on proprietary information that I have of what they paid for the perpetual easement. Furthermore, for my own benefit, it will eliminate any confusion relating to the co-mingling of taxation across lot number one and the garages and the cell tower and all that. Because right now, I get the bill and pay it, and then send the bill to them, and they reimburse me, and it's, it's kind of a mess. I bought the mess, by the way. I'm just trying to make it less messy. I'm not going to go through the whole cell tower argument I wrote because this is running a little long. But I want you to know that you're probably asking, well, if I carve out this little lot with no frontage, how the heck are they going to get there? So exhibit 11 highlights part of the, there's, in addition to the perpetual easement, there's a, an access and maintenance easement on the land records. And the access and maintenance easement, you can see highlighted in yellow. So they have a 24/7 access to come up the driveway, park in front of the garage, and go into that little communications building and do what they need to do. So I'm requesting a variance of all 4.2, all 3.3.1, to create a non-residential lot that will contain the cell tower and associated equipment. My hardship is the existing cell tower and equipment and perpetual easement already exist on the land records. Now, last but not least, lot number one, my fourth application. If you go to exhibit 10, back one exhibit, you'll see a little round yellow, excuse, round red circle next to the building there. Does everybody see that? So the garage, the one that says building is actually a garage, a three-car garage, and it has this like steel shed off the side of it. And that shed is 2.6, 2 feet 6 inches away from the property line I'm proposing, when it should be three according to the reg. Now, it's really easy for me to move this line, this yellow line, six inches, and not have to ask for that waiver. But common sense dictates that I want to deed the exact parcel to the cell tower company that they currently control. So that's why, I didn't draw this and make this up. This is what exists on the land record. records. So therefore, I'm here to ask for a waiver of 3.11 to allow for a side year, side rear yard setback from 3 feet to 2.6 feet for an accessory structure. Again, the hardship is, the existing cell tower exists, the existing garage exists, nothing is going to change, nor increase any, any, well, nonconformity, I guess. Now, my last exhibit, because I sat in your seat, is exhibit 12. When you throw a lot out of board like this, you're like spinning a little bit, and this is a summary of my requested variances, their hardships, and their associated lots. Lot two, lot three, lot five, and lot one, in the order of presentation. So that concludes my somewhat long-winded presentation. One last note before I open this up to questions is that I still have to go to the wetlands commission, I still have to do deep hole tests to make sure the septics are capable of going on these lots. I'm confident we'll be able to accomplish that. But without your approval, it's full stop and back to the drawing board. So this is the order I was instructed by the planning department, the sequence of events, which is zoning board of appeals first, wetlands commission second, planning commission third. So thank you for your time, and you have, I'm here for all your questions.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gibson.
I do, I have a question. When you're talking about the cell tower and access out, could you describe that from, from this page?
The cell tower?
Yeah, where you're saying that you're going to have an access for 24 hours.
Yeah, so.
Beth, could you just explain?
So what I, in my presentation, I said that, you know, if you approve a parcel of property that has no road frontage, how do you get to it? They're not going to helicopter in. So what exists on the land records is an access and utility easement. It's part of the easement I submitted for the record, by the way. And what it does is, it says that the, whoever controls, owns the perpetual easement, and/or anyone they invite, can use this yellow accessway on exhibit 11 to get up to the cell tower. So let's say, something goes wrong with their equipment, and it's 4:00 in the morning. They send Verizon up, and they go up there, and whoever's living in this house is going to say, hey, honey, somebody's coming up the driveway. It's probably Verizon guy. Put the pot of coffee on, he's got to fix the tower.
So it would be their driveway, though?
Yes, yeah. And that, this is actually a recorded map on the land records, this easement. Currently exists.
Okay, that's my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Witham.
Can I ask a question of Dan, or not yet?
Sure, absolutely.
Do you know what the reasoning is on that frontage in the back lots, why it was, I mean, is there something that makes sense? It doesn't seem to make sense to me.
I couldn't even guess. I'm not sure when that regulation was written. You're talking about the 25-foot over 300 feet?
Yeah, as opposed to the 30.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? So Mr. DiSilio, on the land records, did you find any indication that there was any type of waiver required or necessary to put a cell tower, a commercial, a commercial structure on a residential or an RS1?
That's a great, Chairman Forrester, that's a great question. I did look at the regs. I don't quite understand them, as well as maybe an attorney would, but they all referenced cell towers in commercial zones, none in a residential zone. So I think what happened was, is this one slipped under the radar, if you will, back when we, you know, were just putting hardwiring phones in our cars. And it cost a dollar a minute when your wife calls you and says, bring home milk. I mean, that's, that's the era we're talking about. It's a long time ago. But I do not have an answer, a direct answer to your question.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan, do you have any understanding as to how that happened? And in your capacity as zoning enforcement officer, if I registered a complaint against this cell tower, a commercial structure, a residential building, a residential area, what would you therefore be inclined to have to do?
So as to the first part of how it became the cell tower, I, as well as Mr. DiSilio, looked back at the records. The only record we came across was the windmill that was approved by the zoning commission. I forget the year offhand, I think it was around 2000, 2005, building permits started popping up for the conversion of the electric windmill to what we have now in the cell tower. As for any enforcement action on it, state statute has non-conforming structures legalized after a period of three years of no legal action.
Thank you.
I do have another question.
Mr. Llewellyn and Ms. Gibson.
So kind of through the chairman to Dan, is there any chance that that cell tower, when it got converted, went through the siting council up in Hartford, and maybe went through a state-level process as opposed to a local process?
Yeah, that's very likely. Today, Connecticut Siting Council has pretty much full authority on any sort of modifications of it. So it's very likely that it did go through Siting Council at one point to initiate it.
My question is, when, and if we do make that a commercial zoning area, would that affect the rest of the community?
Mr. Brennan, your thoughts?
Well, I'm just concerned that once, and it makes sense to, to me, to make that commercial because of the tax, but how would that affect the rest of the community?
So making it a commercial use wouldn't change the zone of the property. It would still be considered the RS1. It would just have that commercial component to it. So the zone would not be changed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions of the applicant? Thank you very much, Mr. DiSilio.
Well, thank you, and if I just may add one more thought. Looking at this from 1,000 feet, the residential component, I'm proposing to have four houses on 10 acres, 9.6, which is an average of almost 2.5 acres per house in a residential zone, a one-acre residential zone. As you probably may or may not be aware, there have been some very aggressive developers in this neighborhood proposing hundreds of units, which I, look, I'm a for-profit developer, but I don't want to see that here. And that's why this is the smallest, lowest-density concept I can come up with, and I hope you see it that way also. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this proposal? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jay Sheehy. I reside at 190 Chapel Street, and I'm a big fan of a residential neighborhood with larger lots. So my feeling on this is, I think that four single-family lots on a nice piece of land makes a lot more sense in the neighborhood, and is more consistent with the neighborhood than something that might alternatively bring in significantly more units in a significantly denser development, which also could be an alternative to this, which I think would be very bad for the neighborhood. So I support this, I think, as the most reasonable utilization of that particular piece of property. And I think it would, I would suggest that you find a way to approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehy. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in favor? Come in favor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Michael Aloy, last name is A-L-O-I, and I live at 300 Harvest Ridge Road, Stratford. And I'm here in support of the project at 630 James Farm Road, for much the same reasons. I live right down the street from it, I drive by this property quite a bit, and it's a, it's a nice lot, it's set back a little bit, and I always wondered what that, what that structure was right there. I didn't know it was a house, I thought it was a radio communications thing. So it is in need of improvement, and I think this is a very generous proposal to have individual houses there. It's a leafy neighborhood, so it really fits the character of the development of the area there. So I am in support of this project. And like Mr. DiSilio said, we have seen other applications for larger units down the street, and just not a fan of that, and so I want to see more individual houses in the neighborhood. And so I'm, I'm in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in favor? Come forward, please.
Commissioners, Madam Secretary. Yeah? For the record, Mike Henrick, 165 Brookbend Drive, Stratford, Connecticut. Apologize for the, my apparel, I was out playing soccer this evening, but felt it was important enough to come and speak to this application. As some of you may or may not know, I served on zoning for 12 years. We saw a lot of 830G-type applications come before us. We fought hard to keep those out of, we believed they were overly developing, skirting our zoning regulations. They did come about, I believe, the 830G statute came about because of a large number of people said, not in my backyard. And so, to be fair to developers, they needed to come to an alternate, so they came with this plan. I'm not a fan of it, but it was an alternate, an alternate solution. Some of you might remember back in the day, I know, Mr. Forrester, you were, I believe, on the council with me at the time, we have a project called Avalon Bay, you know, it said that somebody came up with 14 Colonials, there was so much opposition, he just said, I'm not going to bother with this, and sold it to Avalon Bay. Town of Stratford then went into a multi-year, multi-multi-million-dollar battle. Ultimately, we ended up knocking it down from about 140 to 110 units. If you talk to the residents up there now, they typically will say they don't even know it's there. But it was a long battle that we went into, and so, so just, you know, I'm not a fan of those. I think what Mr. DiSilio has proposed is reasonable. I think based on his, his layout, I think his hardships are legitimate. There are other options. Obviously, one is the six-unit development he proposed, but I believe that would be more detrimental to the neighborhood. It would have a larger impact on the neighbors. The layout he has protects the tree line, remains, allows the privacy of the abutting neighbors, gives larger lot sizes, creates more privacy, things that are more in line with the neighborhood that's up there. So I just, I, I think, you know, part of, I'm not going to tell you your responsibilities, you know that, but part of it is, is when you look at it, when we looked at these 830G applications, and I know that, that character of the neighborhood is no longer allowed to be used as a reason to deny an 830G application. But I believe this application is in the character of the neighborhood, it's the best-suited remedy. You know, Mr. DiSilio has said he's not a fan of the 830G. He's also a businessman. If he can't make a profit at this, he'll be forced to sell it. I mean, he's a charitable guy, but, you know, nobody's that charitable. And at that point, who knows what will happen? And it would be horrible to think that, that again, like Avalon Bay, we had an opportunity to welcome a, a small impact in our neighborhoods, and said no, and ended up with something horrendous. I think most of the opposition you'll hear tonight will be somewhere along the lines of, it's always been that way. But change is inevitable, and I think this is the least, least cumbersome, and least, it's, it's not, it's the least worst, the least worst for the neighbors. So I would, I would ask that you listen and consider his requests. I know you guys will deliberate about it, but I would ask that you keep that in mind, that this is probably going to be the best use of that land that we'll see. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henrick. Anyone else in the audience wishes to speak in favor?
Good evening, Chairman, Board. My name is Robert Gonzalez. My son was here earlier, but he was on his work break, so he had to leave. We co-own 610 James Farm Road, which is right next to 630, where Mr. DiSilio wants to do his development. Speaking in favor of it, we've been living in Stratford for the past, I have in the last 40 years, and recently moved into Shelton. My wife saw a place on the river, and now she wants her yard back. So we had an acre on Chapel Street before, and she says, listen, this is a perfect opportunity for us to live right next to my son, bring my money back to Stratford. So I'm in favor of it. We do know that, me and my son have had this conversation. If something like this is not approved, and it gets to the point where units are going in, it's obvious that, you know, we wouldn't want to be in a particular situation like that after purchasing a one-acre lot on James Farm Road, and then to be accompanied by who knows how many other people coming in and out of the driveway. So please consider it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Reclet. I live at 75 Candlewood Road, with the property. 75 Candlewood Road. My last name is Reclet. R-E-C-K-L-E-T. My wife and I own the property directly adjacent to the property that Mr. DiSilio just purchased, and is proposing to build three homes, one on 3.2 acres, the other on 2.9 acres, and the other just a little over an acre. I don't have a problem with this. Things change, it's inevitable. We knew it when we bought the property, that eventually someday, the family that owned the cellphone tower, that was a windmill, that was converted to a cellphone tower, would eventually, the family would tire someday, and they would sell the property, and that it would be developed. My main concern here is the preservation of the RS1 zoning. Well and septic, no large condominium products. It's, it's 9.6 acres. I mean, what a great improvement to this neighborhood would be to have a home on 3 acres. We have an acre, I don't have 3 acres. Wouldn't it be nice to have 3 acres? And have wildlife running through your property? Have 2.9 acres, an acre and a half. It's the American dream to own a property in a quiet, resorted neighborhood as, as we live in. It's quiet, we have tons of wildlife, no one comes up there. So I ask you, is, is this an improvement to the neighborhood? To put up condos would be a shame. It would be the destruction. Roosevelt Forest lies directly across the street, it's a direct path. Is it going to stop the wildlife? No. In fact, the new people that move in are going to have a problem with the deer eating all their plants. And they're going to have to deal with, and they're going to have to deal with the turkeys, and they're going to have to deal with the coyotes. Will they cease to exist there? I doubt it, because they run through our yard. Like I said, things change, things get, who knows what the future holds? We do not want a multi-unit. That would mean the complete destruction of the north end of Stratford, and that's the bottom line. So that's why I'm in favor. My wife is in favor, we're all in favor of this. There's nothing wrong with building three homes. This is America, the man has laid out cash for this property, he's entitled to make money off it. It's what he does for a living. Is it going to impact our three more families, going to impact the traffic on James Farms Road? Are they going to encroach upon the wetlands that are down there? I doubt it. So I ask you to consider, carefully consider Mr. DiSilio's offer. I think it's a great one, and I think it's a great way to avoid future encroachment on what we have left here in Stratford. And I leave it up to you, the commissioner, to decide.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in favor? Speak in favor? Hearing none, those wishing to speak in opposition. Is there anyone wishing, wishing to speak in opposition? Again, please come forward, state your name and address.
I'm listening to the local people here.
One second, can you give us your name and address?
My name is Minna, M-I-N-N-A, last name B-A-R-R-E-T-T, and I live at 397A Ottawa Lane in Orenoke.
Thank you.
I think the most important thing, I came here tonight knowing not a whole lot about this, but hearing a lot of stuff from both ends. this, but hearing a lot of stuff from both ends. And what strikes me is that the people who are around the place that's going to be developed, they're for it. So there's something they know that I think is important to consider, that I do believe. The two things that perk my ears up about how and what should be developed has to do with the wetlands that are on the existing land that's going to be built on and this issue of the cell phone tower. For example, you know, wind power and wind turbines are not destructive to humans. They are difficult for animals, for birds. Cell phone towers are destructive to human beings. Within 1,500 feet of the radius of the cell phone tower, you have maximum microwave exposure. So I think the issue of how that cell phone tower got converted is very important in terms of you determining, well, what should we do with that? That's important, and that should be answered clearly. And the issue of the wetlands is, if you're building near wetlands, what kind of guarantees can you create or cottices on the land can you create so the wetlands aren't disturbed even though people are living near them? My kids live in Easton. They live on a three-acre plot. Half of their plot is wetlands, and they're not allowed to take down a tree. So they live on an acre and a half of land, and they live peacefully with the wetlands behind them that they can't touch. However, my children use pesticides, which annoys me the heck, because I always had an organic lawn. So the pesticides have runoff. So I have to convince them and work on them to convince them that it would be much better to go organic, you know? Because the way in which we look at impact on land kind of comes from a human oversight view. Like you were saying, if you look up from 1,000 feet, you don't see it, you know? So just that kind of sensitivity, you can't ban people from using pesticides on the lawn, but you can create a situation where when you build, the wetland areas that the people are buying can't be built on, it can't be extended into. So I think those are questions that need to be considered and raised. You know, we are going to be interfering with land that may be open, and now it's not going to be. How do we handle that in the best and most sensitive way? So that's all I wanted to say. It's not a four again, it's just a question of what I think is important to look at. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak against the proposal?
Okay. My name is Richard Isik. I live at 570 James Farm Road. And in the audience, I also have my attorney, Joseph Kubik, here. I don't think hardships have been proven. Just for a couple of examples, he claimed the hardship as it being in a regular site. That is not a hardship. He knew what the site was when he bought the property. That is not a hardship. He wanted to reduce the 30-foot-wide driveways to 25 feet because of existing utilities. That's not a hardship. Those existing utilities were there long before he bought the property. And there's a reason, I'm sure, for having a 30-foot-wide accessway and a 16-foot-wide driveway for an accessway that's greater than 300 feet. I'm sure there are safety reasons involved in it. Otherwise, it wouldn't be in the regulations. So reducing that accessway width from 30 feet to 25 feet, it's not a hardship. It's probably a safety issue as well. And there's a very easy solution to the development of this property, a four-lot subdivision, three residential lots and the parcel for the cell towers, a fourth. That would be done, and there would absolutely be no waivers required or no zoning requirements. So I don't know why we're not going with a four-lot subdivision and meet all the requirements of the zoning regulations.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Members of the Board. My name is Joe Kubik, and I reside at 1350 James Farm Road, and my law offices are in Milford, Connecticut. My law firm is Harlow Adams &amp; Friedman. I've served many years at this dais and other capacities, but most recently, I've spent five years fighting affordable housing along James Farm Road and Oranoke Lane. To date, I believe that we have been highly successful. There's still an appeal pending, but I think we're going to win that. So I don't like affordable housing. I don't like cluster housing. I like housing that is affordable for people that they can live in, but not zone-busting housing. My neighborhood has become incredibly diverse in the last 20 years, and it's great. All ethnic groups, cultures, or not all, but many are represented in this neighborhood that once used to be considered where the rich people lived. It's just not that anymore. But we don't want to see massive zone busting, so we don't want the affordable housing projects. And I agree with the speakers that spoke in favor of the application, absolutely. But you have to understand, you're sitting on this board, and the statutes and the case law that have been construed over the years, you're under strict duty to comply with. So first of all, I'd like to say that Mr. DiAsilio's notice, notice is a wrong regulation. It doesn't list the other regulations. This was, for the record, the letter that was sent to the neighbors. So I think notice might be deficient. But that said, I am, I knew Mr. and Mrs. Fordoker very well, been to the property many times. The neighboring property, the former, well, it's still Elias/Ezic property, is about the same-sized parcel, and there's two real rare building lots there, not three rare building lots, two. And that seemed to work for that property, and the variances, let me start to go back. Mr. DiAsilio said, "That's why nobody would buy the land." Okay, so he bought it, thinking that he can come here and get variances granted so that he can make a profit, or it's known as a financial hardship. He wants the extra variances so he can make more money. And the case law is very clear that that's not the basis for granting a variance. Mr. DiAsilio used the term waiver of convenience, which I thought was an interesting term. The hardship that Mr. DiAsilio has, if he has one, has been self-created. And the case law and statutes, the case law is very clear about self-created hardships. He came to the property, he's obviously an experienced real estate developer. He knew what he was getting into when he bought this property, because that's why nobody else would buy the property. The shape of the property, the cell tower, the utilities, were all there before he got there. And by the way, there was some discussion, I remember when the cell tower was put up and the windmill was taken down, concerning the usage of that property. And I bet you, if you guys get some digging, you're going to find some more information. And probably that should be done, because I don't, there might be some restrictions. So as Mr. Isik said, if he goes with two rear lots, he doesn't need the variances for the additional lot. He doesn't need the variances for the residential building lots. And I think two rear building lots, and the cell tower is an anomaly, it's unusual situation, but two rear building lots is acceptable, and he doesn't need the variances to get those. Because if he doesn't have a hardship and the variances are granted and appeal is taken, really good chance that Superior Courts can overturn your decision for granting it. And likewise, if you denied it, it's very unlikely the Superior Courts can overrule you. So two rear lots would be acceptable, because you don't need the variances for those two rear building lots, because there is no true hardship. It's either financial or self-created. The courts will highly likely strike down any approval for the three building lots, three residential building lots. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Speak in opposition? Please come forward.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Charles Carroll. I also live on the adjacent street at 120 Candlewood Road. And my only objection to this particular party is that the creation of lot number five to isolate that cell tower on an independent microscopic 3,000-square-foot, I think that should go along with the lot where the house is on and continue with this petition to build three houses there. So it would be a total of four building lots. Lot number five would still remain where the house and the garage is and the shed.
Understood. Any other comments?
Pardon me?
Any other comments?
No, I just, maybe you have a question. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Speak in opposition? One more time, in opposition? If not, the Chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing on petitions three, four, five, six, and seven.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to close by Mr. Lewellin. Do I hear a second? By Ms. Cleary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Seeing there's no other petitions on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Ms. Witham, seconded by Ms. Gibson.
Yes, I second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries unanimously. We will now go into the administrative session. First item of business on the administrative session is the items listed on the public hearing agenda dated July 5, 2022. Does anyone have any indication or want to take any action on petition number one? Anyone want to take it off the table? Petition number one? Okay. Nobody wants to take one off the table? How about petition number two?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to take item number two, 498 Second Avenue, off the table.
Motion by Mr. Lewellin to take 498 Second Avenue off the table. Do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. We are now open for discussion on 498 Second Avenue. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve, deny, or retable?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Do I hear a second? Second, by Ms. Cleary. Discussion on the motion. Anyone have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion passes unanimously, five-zero. Anyone want to take any action on items three, four, five, six, and seven?
Mr. Chairman, for purposes of discussion, I make a motion to take off the table.
Motion to take three, four, five, six, and seven off the table for discussion. Do I hear a second?
I make a second to.
Second, by Ms. Gibson. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're now open for discussion on those items. Mr. Lewellin?
So, Mr. Chairman, given the sort of level of detail and analysis going into this, and I think us wanting to be a responsible body, either tied to you or Dan, make a request that we have a town attorney meet available to us, and I would have no concerns or objection if said attorney was Alex Florick. But I think we should be thorough in our research, ensuring our decisions before we move forward with these petitions. Thank you.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
There's a lot involved here. Yeah, thank you.
Right. Ms. Cleary?
What this, correct me if I'm wrong, what this comes down to is making the neighborhood, I mean, nice, the larger lots, and saving the tree line. This would save the tree line, right? He can do it all within the statutes here, but the trees would go? Is that the negative that there is with him staying in? Is there anything else? Am I?
The potential subdivision, you're saying, but this, he does the absolute duty.
The potential for another negative that we haven't looked at yet is the fact that it would become a, the road may have to be serviced by the town of Stratford. So to create a subdivision, the road would have to be something that the town would have to plow, it would have to maintain going forward. Under the current proposal, that is not the case.
So would it be deemed a private road? Is that what it would be? Or it would just be a driveway?
Yeah, my understanding, yeah. It'd be a driveway. It would be a limited access. A typical example is one behind my house off of Houstonic Avenue Extension. There are four houses serviced by one driveway. The town does not plow it, does not maintain that driveway. It's private contract. It's held fee simple by the four individuals.
Okay. My other concern was going with option one. I mean, I am in favor of fair housing in the right places, but because the area is concerned about fair housing, you know, just putting up three structures or four homes on large lots doesn't really keep the community safe from having fair housing, because each individual could still sell their home or whoever's buying it. You still don't know. So that's a concern that I would also think about.
Any other discussion? Ms. Cleary?
Would the extra income of $65,000-plus cover that cost of maintaining that road, new road?
Under that alternate proposal that was put forth, I don't believe that we would not be creating a separate zone for that tower.
Thank you.
Or a separate lot. I shouldn't say the word "zone." I misspoke. A separate lot for that. Or the potential, you would not have to do that. I have a few questions through myself to Mr. Brennan. Mr. Brennan, knowing you're not a legal expert, and there was an issue raised regarding the notice, if it was a proper notice, if you'd be so kind as to refer that to the town attorney or he or she to review?
Yes. I haven't had a chance to see the notice, but was it mailing from the applicant?
This is the mailing. And the question that was posed this evening, or the issue that was posed this evening is that the notice fails to list all of the potential variances required. I just want to make sure that by sending that letter, there's no question that something that was proposed is not what's on the agenda.
Yeah. I don't believe there is a requirement from the applicant, as long as it's posted correctly in the paper. But we'll run that by the attorney.
Just run it by, just to be sure. In addition, because of the fact that the accessway is 400 feet, and it may have gone back to the situation where public safety might have gotten involved and said that's where the 30 feet came from. So I would refer this, if it hasn't already been referred to, let's just say, the fire marshal, see if there's any negative comments from public safety with regards to the width only being 25. We don't want a situation whereby a fire truck, the fire trucks, as we know, do not have a greater of 25 feet. But if they needed to get in in a side-by-side fashion, would that cause a problem? I just want to cover our bases and make sure that we're not creating any type of a public safety issue, so let's have them take a look at it and get back to us. And I would really love to get a little more detail with regards to that cell tower. I mean, I understand the state superseding things, but it was suggested by the applicant that there would be a certain amount of revenue generated from taxes as a result of that. That notwithstanding, I want to see if there's any type of tax assessment question in regards to carving out a separate lot in an RS1 zone used for commercial purposes and whether or not that would affect the way that they would approach it from a tax standpoint, just to verify the statement that was made or add some more color to the statement that was made by the applicant in the public record.
Okay.
Ms. Witham?
I have a question. I drove by that area today, and the frontage there is huge. And when he's saying that there's utilities there, I mean, I would think the utilities that are there are more with the house that's existing, because there's, to the right, is all kind of open, so I'm not sure like how the utilities are in the way of this long driveway.
It could be that there's a separate utility line going back to the cell tower, but I'm not 100% certain. We would have that on the plot plans, right, in the town engineering? If there's a utility easement, we'll have that in the town, right?
Yeah, it should be recorded in the town.
Right. If you'd be so kind as to take a look at that, and we'd appreciate that. So I think what we're saying is, is we need some additional information. Because there was a question on the legality, we'd like to have our town attorney here. There was also a question as regard to what the scope of the commission is and is not. Just love to have the other side of the view. I mean, from the standpoint, Mr. Kubik is a well-respected attorney, but there are two sides to every argument, and I'd just like to hear from our experts, so to speak. Mr. Lewellin?
No, I completely agree. And that's why I think, you know, like I said before, we should take some time as a body, do our due diligence, and make the best decision we possibly can.
I agree. With that having been said, do I?
Motion to retable?
Yes. Motion to retable, three, four, five, six, and seven.
I'll second.
Second, by Ms. Cleary. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Chair votes yes. So that'll be on our next agenda, which, as we get down to other items, will determine when the next administrative session agenda will be. I'm going to get back to that one.
Mr. Chairman, do we have with clear definition what our decision times are with regards to various applications? I know there have been some questions in the past where you weren't sure if we had 35, 50, 60 days to make final decisions.
Yeah, so we have, it's 65, 35, 65. We have 35 days to open, which we've heard. We can go 65 days, any long, anything longer than that. We need an extension approval from the applicant.
From the applicant, correct. So we have 65, which means we have the potential of having any special meeting or the next regularly scheduled.
I'm just trying to account for various peoples and entities' summer vacation schedules, so.
Understood.
Good, good to hear that we got 65, that'll carry us into September.
Yep, understood.
Is there, why don't we not take item one off?
I just want to make sure that we all, that there's no, no one indicating that they want to do anything with regards to 50 Houstonic Avenue, petition number one at this time, is that correct? We didn't make a motion to take it off the table or do anything with it, but I'm just want to make, make sure everybody's comfortable with leaving number one on the table.
I make a move to take it off the table.
Yeah, a motion to take it off the table, do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Second by Ms. Gibson, okay, motion is now off the table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Petition number one is now open.
So, to Dan, question to you concerning this, in your review comments, you're sort of of the impression that this hardship appears to be self-created, and therefore there should be some questioning with regards to granting the requested variance. I was just wondering if you could kind of take us through the process a little bit, you know, especially one of my kind of lines of thinking with this is, is this looks like it's more of like a, a commercial use, and so I'm less inclined to have the nerves and the anxiety that come with creating a precedent in a residential setting. So I just kind of wanted to get a little bit of a feel for, you know, kind of where you got to the conclusion about the variance appearing to be self-created.
Yeah, so height variances, again, in my opinion, are difficult when you're looking for a hardship. You know, if you have a smaller non-conforming lot to the lot size, going up, sometimes it could be argued for it. When you have a lot like this that meets most of the size regulations, it's difficult to, to have a logic reason to go up. In this case, you know, you do have a marine use, which the use itself could present a hardship to the regulations themselves. I had talked to the architect, you know, a couple days ago before the meeting, and he was asking the same question. The thing with our regulations, when we measure height, is we measure from average grade to the midpoint of a roof line, which is typically a pitched roof. They're proposing a flat roof, where our regulations cut it at 30 feet. If they had any sort of dimensional ridge to it, they would ascend, in a sense, be able to go to that 35 feet with no variances. So it's kind of, the regulations in themselves could, could present a hardship for it as well.
Did they have any response to you when you sort of explained to them that although they're going to get no use out of it, that if they created a fake peak at the end of the building where they want to put these doors, they basically wouldn't need a variance?
Right, so their response was basically aesthetics. They, they wanted the new building to match the existing, which completely makes sense in my opinion.
I agree. Okay, I kind of understand where, where everybody's coming from, and so I guess, like, kind of, the thing that I'm weighing is sort of what I said before, with this being more of a commercial use, I'm not kind of concerned that the neighbor down the street's going to go, oh, hey, that's a great idea, I want a 30-foot-high garage door too.
Right, and this, this would stand shorter than the majority of the houses in the neighborhood who hit that, you know, 30 feet at the midpoint of the ridge, and it goes up a couple more feet.
He also said that it wouldn't be seen, it's not seen.
Right, this building is set back from, from most of the others.
And you're basically indicating that the proposed use is in compliance with waterfront, because it's a waterfront access? Well, folks, what do you want to do with it?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do I hear a second?
I will make a motion a second.
Second by Ms. Gibson, discussion on the motion.
Just prior to voting, I just want to note real quickly that it is in Dan's comments that Architectural Review Board has done their, their work on this prior to it getting to us as a body, so just speaking to the roof condition, construction being in character with the neighborhood, it seems like somebody's kind of taken that step in advance of us being here.
Thank you for that comment. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do want to make note of one thing, I was taking my notes. On petition two that we just approved, they did make an offer to take down that shed, but in our approval, we did not say yes, no, so we're no obligation to take that shed down. Do we want to make a motion to reconsider our approval and put in the fact that the shed must be removed, that would reduce the coverage, and that all efforts be made to preserve the silver maple? So to do it formally, I would need a motion to reconsider our approval for petition number two. Motion to reconsider by Ms. Cleary, second by Ms. Lewellen. Discussion on the motion, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, what I would ask is that if we're going to approve it, we approve it with the stipulation the shed be removed and all efforts be made to maintain the silver maple. Who made the original motion?
I think, I think I did.
You accept that as a friendly?
I do, accepted as a friendly, stated by Chairman Forster, we're going to re-vote on this with the shed to be removed and protection of said maple tree.
And who was the second on that? Was it Judy? Or Ms. Gibson?
[inaudible]. Actually, it's Carrie that first did, and Judy second.
All right, so Carrie, do you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yes, I accept.
I accept the amendment as.
Outlined by Ellen, okay. Renee, you second? Whoa, excuse me, frog in my throat tonight. Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So Dan, just note that, that he made the offer of taking a shutdown, we've rethought that and we've said yes, and whatever they can do to preserve the silver maple within reason. Okay, we're now on to item number two, the approval of the minutes of June 7th. Chair will entertain a motion?
Minutes from June 7th.
We have a motion by Ms. Witham, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Gibson, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes unanimously. Cam site, we have nothing on that, so three stays dormant, nothing on four. Members' concerns or comments, the five. Other items, request for the board to meet in August. Mr. Brennan, has there been petitions received that they would like to have us do something in August?
Yes, currently, we have two petitions that have requested if we could meet in August. I told them I would present that this evening, and now we have James Farm Road to continue, so.
Okay, I know we made a statement earlier on, on a previous meeting, that we would do everything we could to address people's applications timely, so I'm just looking at my calendar, that would take us to August number nine. No, is it, no, I'm sorry, August 2nd, am I saying, August 2nd. Does anybody have any scheduling conflicts for August 2nd that they know of?
Ironically, I am just back from Minnesota that day.
Same as I am. I flew in, I flew in at 2:00 this afternoon, I was actually 15 minutes early to my flight. Who knew?
Another, another further comment, do we know the context of those applications?
One is for 2150 Barnamav, I believe it's called Mongo's Bar, or used to be Ray's Bar. They're looking to add six residential units above it.
Ray's Bar, I agree with you.
The site has a total of 12 parking spaces.
Yeah.
So they're looking for parking, coverage, setbacks, the whole gauntlet.
Okay.
Another one is for a single-family addition, modest addition with a rear deck off the back. And then there was also an application that was submitted for this meeting that we, that we kicked, kicked back because it was incomplete, and that's for Broadbridge Road. I'm not sure if you are familiar, Gold Coast submitted a text amendment application for development up on the corner of Streckfuss and Broadbridge. They have revised their application, they're submitting a revised site plan to us for a four-lot subdivision for four single-family houses. So.
So, so tonight, kind of having served as a little bit of a primer for all of us, again, some of my same comments would apply. Can we engage Town Attorney's Office slash Alex Florick sooner rather than later? And as soon as that documentation's ready, can that be given to us so we can kind of start doing our independent review and analysis?
Yes, as long as I can reach him tomorrow, then I will start that conversation.
Thank you, I, I appreciate it. As a, as a former, you know, zoning commissioner, I, I have found the town attorneys to be an invaluable resource. In my time on the zoning commission, I heard three 8-30Gs, so I really feel like having that guidance and that frame of reference helps us out. Oftentimes, the applicants are either real estate attorneys or real estate developers or attorneys themselves, and so it's, it's comforting to have one on our side. Thank you.
I would like to make a comment that I'd like to be on record, as I've probably been to four or five meetings since I became part of this group, and I'm very disappointed that our attorney has been not at two of them, and is running in the door at another one at the 11th hour. I just, I'm really struggling with that, and maybe we need to find someone else who will do the work that we need them to do.
I will relay that message. I know tonight he had, it wasn't even tonight, I think it was this morning, he had some last-minute travel, something came up, I'm not sure about the details. His father, attorney John Florick, stopped by earlier this evening and said, you know, he apologized for Alex's absence, and if something did come up, he recommended tabling the applications for next meeting.
I agree about tabling, but I really feel like, you know, it's our job to move forward as quickly as we can. And if we're tabling things because our attorney isn't showing up, and like I said, this has happened twice since I've been at these meetings, and I really think, you know, they should send another representative from the firm, or we should have a backup, but I don't think this is acceptable. I don't.
Yeah, in my opinion, it's not acceptable. The town attorney assigns us legal counsel, and if the assigned attorney can't be here, then I expect the town attorney to be here, or someone else that they use as a backup. And the fact that it's last minute, things come up, I understand, but that you've got a whole pool of attorneys that this town uses, one of them can be here on short notice. So, I mean, we're, we're, we're getting our membership here. Unfortunately, Mr. Barrett, of course, still under the weather, hopefully he will be with us, you know, soon, but we've always been able to have a full complement of at least five commissioners, and I expect to see our town attorney here, and if he cannot do it, then it's up to the town attorney. Who is the town attorney these days? I don't even bother with that stuff. Chris Hodgson's. Well, if, if, if Mr. Florick can't be here, I expect Mr. Hodgson's to assign somebody else that day. So I think we've, I think we've made our position very clear on that. If there's nothing else, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Or we can stay here all night, I mean.
My mic's on, so I'll, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Ms. Witham, do I hear a second? Second by Ms. Gibson.
Was there a decision?
We're going to have a meeting on August 2nd, yes. We've made that our position, that if, if somebody has a petition, that, you know, we're an elected body, we were elected to serve and not necessarily have summer vacation. So that's what we'll do. So we have a motion and a second to adjourn, there's no discussion on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.